I'm going to call the city council meeting of September the first, 2015. To order, Sandra, can you please call the row?
Teddy, Tannett, Schopmar, Latier.
Rosen.
Long.
Here.
Gray, Marsh.
Here.
Canyon.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here.
What'd you call, Tannett?
Tannett.
Here.
Here we go. Oh, join me in the flagrant.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jimmy Carter, Delaware.
Well, you. Okay. First order of business we have tonight is the quarterly financial report, second quarter 2015, Paul Becker, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the report on the end of the second quarter of the fiscal year, so it's through June. That's the first half of the year. Very happy to report, as we've discussed several times, the sales tax is doing very well in the general fund. It's up about 5% over budget at this point in time. As I look at the general fund, besides sales tax, the permitting fees for building permits are rising also. I would hope to see at the end of the year approximately a million dollars over budget at that point in time now. When I look at that, and as we recall back at the end of the first quarter, based on the recommendation made by Mayor Jordan, you approved a salary increase for all employees. If we get a million dollar gain, that means we don't have to go into reserves at all for the year. And so we're coming forward with revenue catching up with expenditures, which has been what our goal has been for the last several years. So I'm very pleased about that going into next year. Now, there's a chance that sales tax is going to level off. It can't continue forever, but so far we've seen a lot of strength, and I'm very happy with that. HMR taxes have been up also, so that is also supporting that growth. As far as water and sewer revenues, the sewer revenues up about 5% this year, water's up about 3%. So that's just about in keeping what we had expected, little over that. Expenditures are about where we had planned. Again, we do have a lot of capital expenditures going on in that particular fund, and we certainly have the finances going forward to make those capital improvements based on the revenues we have now. Again, HMR taxes have been strong this year. HMR taxes for the year are up about 10% so far, so that's exceedingly strong again. We're looking at capital improvements in the future out at the regional park, many of which has been funded, and I have, I'm pretty confident at this point in time that we'll be, we'll be able to complete what we had talked about in Phase One and also have the lights on the soccer field that although was not in the contract, we committed to fund. So I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to do that. So everything I'm looking at is pretty positive for the year so far. There's no major declines in revenue that I see, and expenditures are just about where I would expect them to be at this point in time. I will be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have, Paul, on the financial report? Anything? Okay.
Mayor, may I ask, may I add one other thing while I'm on it? We just got, we just got word from the Internal Revenue Service, as many of you will recall, we were subjected to an audit of the 2007 bond issue for sales tax bonds that we used for the completion, that particular issue was for the completion of the West Side Sewer Treatment Plant. I'm happy to report to you that we got our results back with no findings. I've been in this business many, many years, and all I can say is, in over 30 years, this is the second IRS audit on bond issues I've ever seen, and both of them here at the city, both of them, there were no findings when it was done, so I feel very good about that, and I wanted to inform you that because if you remember, we retained legal counsel to be our conduit and our contact, so I thought you would be interested in that.
Okay. All right. Before I get into the consent, I would ask the council to pull an item off the consent tonight, number seven, the resolution on the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Risk MAP Phase Two. We have citizens who'd like to address us on this tonight.
So it is just, just with your request, it is off because the ten item is by unanimous consent, so if anybody wants any single item off, it is off.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, now for the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the August 18th, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $39,089 representing donation revenue to the animal services for the first and second quarters 2015. Number three, a resolution authorized purchase of two 2015 T-590 T4 Bobcat compact track loaders from Williams Tractor, a Fayetteville, Arkansas, in the total amount of $101,189.2 pursuant to a National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative purchasing agreement for use of transportation services. Number four, a resolution authorized the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-250 four-by-four from Lewis Ford of Fayetteville, Arkansas in the amount of $23,075 pursuant to a state procurement contract to use by Parks and Recreation. Number five, a resolution to approve a budget adjustment in total amount of $147,170 recognizing parkland dedication fees from the northwest and northeast quadrants to be used for lining at Bryce Davis Park and improvements to Lake Fayetteville. Number six, a resolution approved amendment number two to the contract Fayetteville Advertising Promotion Commission for the city to provide operational and maintenance services for the town center parking deck in exchange for the use of 55 parking spaces for a period of one year with five additional one-year automatic renewals.
Will you accept the consent agenda?
Second.
We have motion second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
Okay, now, item seven, we don't have any unfinished business, so I would want to put item seven there, which is a resolution authorized to cease participation in Phase Two of the Risk MAP program with the Federal Emergency Management Agencies and the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission to update the Washington County Flood Insurance Study and Flood Insurance Rate Maps at a cost of up to $43,658. Which staffer has this? Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a proposal to participate in some updated mapping that FTN, the consultant that's been selected by ANRC, to do this mapping, has put together a package essentially countywide to redo floodplain mapping throughout the county. The city's portion of that mapping is proposed to be approximately $43,658. It will update about 29 miles of Zone A streams, about five miles of converting Zone A to Zone AE, and I'll talk about what those are in a minute, and then redelineating about 47 miles of current Zone AE streams in the city. So the benefit of this that the city receives, the Zone A streams, which have the least information, we have a floodplain shown on the maps, but they really haven't been modeled, they're just kind of lines on paper. We actually will receive a model, and we'll have a much more accurate delineation of what those streams are. We won't have the fully detailed model that the Zone AE streams, they have a little bit more information, so we are converting some of the Zone A streams to Zone AE. Includes floodway, includes much more detailed information, and so we're getting better modeling on all of our streams, much better modeling on some of our streams. And then the last part, we do have some current Zone AE streams, we do have the floodway information and models. Those will be redelineated using new topographic information, new drainage information as development has occurred, and so we'll get better, better mapping, more accurate maps. Many times, we have folks who come in who are in the floodplain, they'd like to know what elevation their floodplain is on their particular property, but all of those Zone A streams that don't have the modeling behind it, we don't really have much any, of any information we can provide them. So they have to hire an engineer, go out and develop that elevation certificate, and tell them what that floodplain is. So this will give us much better information, we can provide information to property owners in a much better, more detailed manner, so that they, that they have better information where they are in the floodplain. It also will identify areas that should be protected, that are in floodplain areas where we should not be building, and so we can protect those areas, reserve those areas in accordance with our ordinance. The last thing that we didn't talk about at the agenda session, but we are receiving some additional topographic information, the LiDAR information that we're receiving is all being done at the cost of, essentially it's a grant, FEMA grant, that's providing the new topographic information. So we're essentially getting the city re-flown, getting new topo information, again, as we have development occur and things change throughout the city with grading and that sort of thing, this updated mapping is going to be very beneficial to the city. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Chris, in the management of stormwater, we have monitoring for velocity and for levels of water. Is this going to give us good additional information that maybe we could use?
Yeah, the, right, the stations that we have out there for both, we have, we have water quantity monitoring, you know, to measure elevations, and we also have water quality information. This is kind of a supplement, and it all works together. This is more mapping level, the FEMA mapping, the flood insurance rate maps that are used to develop, to determine what, where flood insurance is needed and what the flood insurance costs are. So this is mapping level information. Some of those monitoring stations that we have are a little more fine-grained information and more detailed information just on particular streams. This really is a citywide project, countywide, actually, so all of the floodplains will be redelineated and looked at again.
Anything else? John.
Chris, for $43,638, exactly how are they going to give us this more data? Are they going to walk through the stream themselves, taking camera shots or angles or what's happening? Give me the practical outworking of this spending.
Right, there will be some field work. Most of it is computer mon, computer modeling. This, this topographic information that I talked about is used to develop cross-sections and figure out what the lay of the land is, and then the computer modeling, you run the computer modeling, and that topographic information, the hydraulic information, you know, how much water is flowing through, is analyzed by the computer that sets floodplain elevations and determines where the, where the flooding levels are going to be. So it's mostly a computer exercise.
So in this computer exercise, could the system be manipulated in some way to deter development, to say the floodplain is a little further out than it actually is? Is there some standard deviation of error, or is it subject to some sort of error rate?
Well, essentially, there are, there's our standard practices on the way you model things. You know, for instance, in areas where you have lots of trees, then obviously the water is slowed down and doesn't flow through quite as quickly, so you, you have adjustment factors that you put into the computer model. But again, there are standard practices and best practices that are used. It's a, it's a computer model, so it is subject to error, but this will give us much more accurate data than we have now, even though there may be some areas that we determine later that the computer model needs further adjustment, this will be a better model than what we have now.
Okay. You mentioned also that by us spending this money, that would give us more accurate data that consumers or property owners could use when they have a building project to see where their property is in relation to the floodplain. Would there be a charge for that data, or would be provided as a no charge?
If, if it is available and it is information that we have, that we can provide to the citizens, we have a stormwater engineer, Alan Pugh is here, and he can maybe speak to more detail about what kind of information he would provide in a specific instance, but if we have that information available, we provide it at no charge as a service to our citizens. If we don't have that information available, they do sometimes have to hire a consultant, hire an engineer, do that investigation, and determine where the floodplain is on their property.
I would hate to think that we, as the city council, are going to spend $43,000-plus dollars of citizens' money and then charge them again for the same data.
Right, we do not do that.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now we'll open it up for public comment. Please give us your name and address. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone unless council member will bring you back to ask questions, keep comments to the mayor, don't engage the public or city council.
Hi, my name is Cora Lantheer. My address is 1215 Ellis Avenue. I do live in the floodplain, and I've been in contact with Alan Pugh. We've had quite a few back and forths over this issue. I have been there for almost 16 years, so I have a lot of historical data to offer about the flooding situation there. I have been concerned that the flooding might be worse, and I initially contacted Mr. Pugh because I felt that it might be related to some of the development in this part of town. It's a rapidly developing watershed, as you know, it's around campus, of course, and one of the goals of the city is to promote infill, which is a goal that I support, and I'm glad that we're looking to do that. The problem is, is that there are people who are, I guess, the collateral damage of that infill. As you infill, you know, you create more impermeable surfaces, you take out trees. I understand we have a tree ordinance as well as a low-impact development ordinance, but my concern is that perhaps we are interpreting them in a very narrow way. There's a lot of older trees that have been pulled out for a lot of different developments, a lot of parking lots paved over and, or land paved over, and it does concern me the rate at which the area is developing and that the water is rising much faster than it used to. College Branch, otherwise known as Mullins Creek, which is a tributary to Town Branch, which is in the Beaver watershed, runs through my backyard. I see it when it rises, I have to keep an eye on it, and I have to say that, you know, from my, from what I can tell, it does seem to be rising faster. And it worries me. So that's the context of why I contacted Alan, and we went, we had quite a few back and forths over the last, I believe, six months, five months, and from what I can tell, this FEMA Risk MAP Phase Two is their, their solution for helping people that live in this area. As you probably all know, people who live in floodplains are generally lower-income people because that's the land that they can afford. I recognize that it is a goal of the city also to maintain a low-income homeownership, which is something that I also support, but I would like to remind you that there are currently many low-income homeowners, and a lot of us live in the floodplain, and we are being negatively impacted by some of this development. You can't stop development, as much I know. My, my issue with the FEMA Risk MAP Phase Two, well, there's a couple of them. One of them is that, well, I asked Alan Pugh specifically, what would the flood mitigation, mitigation benefits be? Because this is, after all, the reason why I contacted him. How can we mitigate the flooding? How can we slow, slow this down? And his first item was that there would be flood mitigation grants that, that could possibly be available should the zoning support it. However, upon further discussion, he recognized that it was extremely unlikely that we would receive any of these grants because it, for my neighborhood in particular, this might not be so for some of the other neighborhoods, but for my neighborhood in particular, it would be extremely unlikely to receive them because we do not have a recorded history of repetitive loss. The second thing that he said that this Phase Two Risk MAP would accomplish would be the possible widening of the culverts at 11th and 15th Street. There are, there is a history of debris piling up in this area and the water back, backfilling. And so I questioned him about this, and we talked about it, and he eventually recognized that those, those projects were also fairly unlikely to happen because the possible damage that it could do to people downstream.
Would you tell me where the culvert widening was, in 11th and?
And the, the land around the 15th culvert to the west of it is currently for sale. We talked about, you know, different things that we could do, but he seemed to firmly believe that it was unlikely that we would be able to purchase any of it, to do any kind of mitigation efforts. The last thing that Mr. Pugh said would be a benefit of this FEMA Risk MAP Phase Two, which I would like to clarify, the city's cost of $43,000 is only 10% of the actual cost. The actual cost to the state and other levels of government is 400 and third, over $430,000. And this is an update to the FEMA zones that were updated as recently as 2008. So unless we really believe that the topography and the hydrology has changed considerably just in the last few years, it seems to be that we might be duplicating some efforts here. I am aware that some of the computer modeling might not have taken place with the previous rezoning, because when it was rezoned, then these zones got bigger, more people were placed into the floodplain, myself included. But the third possible flood mitigation benefit that Alan Pugh said might be made available after this Phase Two was, let's see, how about here? Base flood elevation certificates. Base flood elevation certificates will be available at no cost, as you pointed out in Mr. Latier. However, for most of the people who already live in the floodplain, there is very little need for a base flood elevation certificate. This would mostly just benefit people who wish to develop in the area and do not want to hire an engineer to do this for them. So after long conversation with Mr. Pugh, he concurred that indeed there is no real flood mitigation benefit to this almost half a million dollar authorization. He recommended that if I wanted some flood mitigation efforts, that I approached the city council about the enforcement and interpretation of our tree ordinance, our low-impact development ordinance, and our open spaces plan. And I know that these things can be interpreted in a wide variety of ways, and there's lots of ifs, ands, or buts, and I guess I would request that we take a broader view of some of these ordinances and plans, especially as it pertains to particular watersheds that are undergoing rapid development and experience a great deal of flooding. I love that Fayetteville has these things, and I think it's great. I think it would be even better if we tried a little bit harder to enforce them in a more meaningful way. Not that it's not meaningful now, but I feel like the rate of development, I mean, just drive around the area, a lot of these student housing developments, I mean, they're, they're taking off, they're clearcutting, they're taking off tops of mountains, you know, and not only is this having a surface water drainage impact, we have a lot of underground streams in the area, and they also come down to the same areas that have surface water issues. So, and a lot of the mitigation efforts required by the developers are forcing this water underground. And so I would like to point out that a lot of these surface water issues, which are supposedly being remedied by funneling this water into underground streams, they're still going to the same place. And I guess, you know, I understand the conflicting interests of development and the environment, because again, this is, you know, our drinking water watershed, and so when we pave over these meadows and fields and take out all these older trees and replace them with saplings, we are having a direct impact on our water quality. It's not just about those of us who live in a floodplain and who are negatively impacted. This actually has a direct impact on the drinking water quality for this whole area. But I do understand that, you know, economic development is necessary, you have to keep moving forward, but I would just really like it if we could maybe approach some of these ordinances in a, with a broader perspective, a broader interpretation, because I see a lot of 100-year-old trees being taken out for parking lots and student housing. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Ms. Claire.
Cora.
Cora, excuse me. I take it you want us to vote for spending this money?
If the only benefit of spending almost a half a million dollars is to update a six-year-old FEMA map, the only benefit is to provide developers with free base flood elevation certificates? No, I don't think it's worth it. Perhaps there's something that I am missing, but I've had long conversations with Mr. Pugh, and I don't think there is anything that I'm missing. He basically agreed with me that there is no flood mitigation tied to this.
I just need to get a read for exactly how you want us to vote on this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you.
We've talked about this specific area a lot and water sewer solid waste because we know the increase of the velocity, and we had a lot of development with the view, Hill Street Apartments, Fayetteville High School, and it all ran right down into College Creek. And so I guess what I, the reason I ask Chris this is because we are upgrading our monitoring, because we have to, we have to protect, as you said, our stormwater runoff in order to protect- to protect our drinking water. And whenever it starts at the highest elevation, which is around the university and the high school, and comes down through your neighborhood, and then it heads down to Town Branch, Town Branch directly into the west fork of the White River, we need good information. And it is expensive to get information that will help us quantify what we need to do for mitigation. And so I understand your concern about spending the money on it, but if the federal dollars are going to come in, it might be worth it, I'm trying to think, you know, to have this additional information so we can better understand how to manage, especially the velocity. That's, I think that that's what you're probably alluding to, as well as what we know about on the erosion of the side of the streams. And of course, the more velocity, the more erosion, the more sediment, and the harder it is for us to manage the stormwater runoff. So with this opportunity to get federal money, I might, well, not, I heartily respect your point of view. I really do. And if I lived there, I would be equally as concerned. And I'm pretty equally concerned, because I am, we have discussed this area so much. We just, we're looking at ways to mitigate it, to handle it, and like I mentioned to Chris, I guess I think if we can get a half a million dollars' worth of data for $45,000, maybe there's a trade-off where we can utilize this data to better manage and mitigate the erosion of the stream, especially right where you're talking about. Because, as you know, the university is going to develop more about the high school, and that's going to put this directly into this tributary. And so having more information, to me, might be very valuable. Like I say, if we can get a half a million dollars' worth of valid information on topography, then it would help us better understand what we need to develop, what we need to fine-tune as far as low-impact development. And you do have very strong advocates for low-impact development on Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee, as well as on the City Council. And it's a delicate balance, because we don't want to inhibit the growth and development, as you mentioned. So I guess I hope you'll understand if I vote to support this, that it is in no way trying to devalue the information that you've given us today. In fact, it's very valuable, and the fact that you brought it to the attention of the complete City Council is extremely valuable. So thank you.
May I respond?
Pardon?
May I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, I am in favor of more data. I was actually wondering if we could have stream gauges installed, because they would measure the velocity. I don't think that the topography has changed very much since FEMA has already done its study. So the fact that we were talking about spending a half a million dollars and that we're getting 9% of it for free, I don't know that that necessarily means that we're getting a half a million dollars' worth of data. I think that there might be other ways, and there might even be other grants, where we still might only have to pay for 10% of it. And I would just like to point out that this is still a half a million dollars with no effective mitigation. It is, and the stream gauges, you know, as Alan pointed out, they take approximately 30 years of data to really effectuate some sort of reliable, you know? So yes, it's a half a million dollar study. I don't know if that's necessary for the data, and I don't know if this is a good analogy, but like they say, garbage in, garbage out. I don't know that the topography has changed in the last six years, so, but I am in favor of collecting more data.
Right. If we have the topography and we understand the hydrology, then we can better understand the way that the velocity is going to impact the activity. And so for engineering standards, then we can better interpret what we would expect as the growth increases in the area. So I guess that's, that's how I have to look at it from a scientific point of view on that level. And I don't see it as garbage. I just see it as one more element to help us justify the fact that we might need to go and get more federal money, because the more data that we have, the more data we have to take to the U.S. Geological Survey, who is a very big partner with us in managing this, and very important for us to go to them. We have got new metering, and we're, we're already discussing, you know, what we need to do to improve that. But we certainly need the partnership with the U.S. Geological Survey. And so I, that's another element that, that I'm considering as we move forward.
Yes, Sarah.
I do think that even though the topography probably hasn't changed significantly, mapping tools have evolved, and we do have better, more precise technologies to understand that topography. So I do see some value in this, but, you know, I also live in the floodplain, and these elevation certificates are serious. My house, it was actually used to sit where the Hill Place Apartments are, and they moved it to its current location, and they thought that they were elevating it up so that the house, the level of the floor would be above the floodplain. But you step down into the bathroom, and ta-da, the bathroom is in the floodplain, and I have to have flood insurance on it, and it's a six-inch difference. So, you know, having, knowing exactly where these things fall is really important, and I think having this better technology to understand the lay of the land, I think, can be very helpful for us.
May I respond?
I think we've covered everything. Anybody got any more questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Peter, please.
Mr. Mayor, Peter Tonason, I live in Ward Three. I'm just curious. This says, it mentions the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, but it says to update a flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps. So I have two questions that are related. Why isn't this paid for by whomever it is who collects flood insurance premiums and administers the flood insurance program? Because I would think they have actuaries who calculate risk and are most interested in doing this. And then the corollary to that is if the city does pay for it, does the city get to make this decision as to what is or is not a flood zone? I mean, why don't the people who manage the risk pay for the study, either through federal funds or premiums? But I mean, I have, that's the only question I have.
Well, that's a pretty good question. I want to be sure I got that right. So really, what you're saying is why isn't the insurance companies basically paying for the study?
Basically, which is, I understand, I've never had to buy flood insurance, but it's advertised on TV, warning people that if you live in a flood zone, you need to pay for it. Well, why aren't, why isn't the cost of making this determination factored into that program? But if you do want to pay for it, I'm not saying the city has no legitimate reason to pay for it, I don't know. If you do pay for it, do you get to make a decision that helps the citizens?
Chris, do you have any?
Yeah, Council, Alan Pugh with staff. I think what we're seeing here is kind of a shift in FEMA funding. Historically, what FEMA had done was come into communities periodically and pay for all of the Risk Map updates. The latest conversations we've had with FEMA is they no longer have the funding to do that. But in this particular instance, we are seeing the lion's share of the funding coming from federal and state government rather than municipal government. We're just recognizing the benefit here locally that we could receive from updated mapping. And all FEMA and ANRC are really asking us to do is to participate at some rate in that update, so.
Okay. Yes, John.
So Peter's question is still very relevant. I mean, who decides where that floodplain lies? Is it just a mathematical equation, or is there some human element in there saying, this is where the floodplain is?
There is some human element. I mean, there is some engineering judgment, and when that line is set, you know, I believe, and Chris and I have discussed the fact that in this particular manner, hopefully the city will have more control over how that is set. If we do have questions about certain things that are assumed or placed into the model, certainly we will be engaged in that process and being able to review those, comment on those before they ever get to the FEMA level, so.
So will we have final authority, as the city say, in Fayetteville, Arkansas? This is where we recognize the floodplain?
FEMA has the ultimate final authority on all floodplains throughout the nation. So I guess the answer to that question is probably no. With this process, will we have more ability to input on that? I think that we will, so.
So we have the ability to influence where FEMA places that line?
To a certain degree, yes. Understanding that from an engineering standpoint, there's only so many things that you can influence. I mean, without getting to some ethical issues there, certainly we will try to map it as accurately as we can map it. We certainly don't want to bring people into the floodplain that don't necessarily need to be. But in the same tone as Chris pointed out, we don't want to leave properties out that we should be regulating just to limit that risk, so.
It's kind of like when you deal with the highway department, you make recommendations at the end of the day they'll make.
They decide.
Well, they really do.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Any final discussion on it, or? Well, I'm going to need a...
Move we pass the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion to second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5134, approximately 15 acres located at 1285 East Millsap Road from RSF 4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to P1 Institutional. Kit?
Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from residential single family, four units per acre, to P1 Institutional, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Chairman?
This is a 15-acre parcel located at the east end of Millsap Road, located in the RSF 4 zoning district, which is a single-family zoning district. It's been that way for approximately 30 years. The request in this particular application is to rezone the property to P1 Institutional. P1 allows for cultural and recreational facilities, which includes churches as a matter of right. We believe this proposed zoning would be compatible with the surrounding mixture of single-family residential, commercial, and institutional land uses in the inner-city neighborhood area of the City Plan 2030. The staff has recommended approval of the rezoning as the Plan Commission votes seven to zero.
Any questions for Jeremy on this? Okay. Any public comment on this? Saying now to bring it back to the council.
I may we go to the second reading?
Second. We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5134 for approximately 15 acres located at 1285 East Millsap Road from our residential single-family, four units per acre, to institutional.
I may we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5134 for approximately 15 acres located at 1285 East Millsap Road from residential single-family, four units per acre, to institutional.
Any final comments from the council on this? Anybody good? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Okay. Number two. An ordinance to approve vacation 15-5127 submitted by Alan Baker for property located at 19 North Palmer Avenue to vacate an existing blanket water and sewer easement. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described water and sewer easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following water and sewer easement described in Exhibit B attached. Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled as Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to the following condition of approval. Number one, the vacation shall not be valid until a 20-foot water and sewer easement has been dedicated to the City of Fayetteville by the property owner.
Chairman?
This is a property located at 19 North Palmer Avenue, West Razorback Road, around the university campus, about three blocks west of Razorback Road, within the Hock subdivision. It's currently developed as a single-family home, developed and then constructed in the 1950s. Around that time, the city acquired water and sewer easements throughout this neighborhood as part of a major infrastructure project. However, those easements were not obtained based on the location of the water and sewer lines being installed, but rather were dedicated using the entire parcel description. Therefore, the entire lot became a utility easement, which certainly is an impediment to future development. We recognize this as an issue in the last few years. We've actually, the City of Fayetteville brought forward seven of these blanket easements in 2012. However, there are a few situations that still exist where property owners either didn't sign when we signed the letters that we sent out. This came up as part of a permit, a request by the property owner, and so we are requesting that the existing blanket easement be vacated and rather be replaced with a 20-foot easement centered on the existing sewer line that services this area. Plan Commission voted six to zero in favor of this request, and staff is also supportive.
Any questions? Anything good over there?
Good. I move we pass it.
Second.
Well, give me just a second. I've got to take some public comment. Is there any other questions for Jeremy on this? Okay. Is there any public comment on this? All right. Saying now to bring it back to the council. Now, John?
All right. I want to pass it. I move we pass it.
Well, we've got to go to the second reading.
I move we go to the second reading.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules and go to the second reading is approved. An ordinance to approve VAC 15-5127 submitted by Alan Baker, property located 19 North Palmer Avenue to vacate an existing blanket water and sewer easement.
Move we go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Okay. Number three. An ordinance submitting a residential planned zoning district titled RRPZD 04-1154, timber trails contain approximately 26 acres to modify the zoning of lots 70 through 77, 98, and 99 to allow for use unit eight, single-family dwellings. Kit?
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the change to RRPZD 04-1154 timber trails to modify the zoning of lots 70 through 77, lots 98 and 99, to allow for use unit eight, single-family dwellings, as shown on Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section Two, that the planned zoning district ordinance and official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas for RRPZD 4-1154 timber trails, as passed and approved by the City Council on December 7, 2004, with ordinance number 4647, shall be modified with revisions as described in Section One above.
Chairman?
The Timber Trails Planned Zoning District was approved several years ago. It is primarily developed west of Happy Hollow School, east of Happy Hollow Road. It was approved for 15 single-family homes and 48 two-family homes, for a total of 111 total residential units. There were specific lots approved for single-family development and other lots approved for two-family development. This particular request is to amend the planned zoning district to allow for single-family homes to... There were specific lots approved for single-family development and other lots approved for two-family development. This particular request is to amend the planned zoning district to allow for single-family homes to also be constructed on lots 70 through 77, lot 98, and lot 99. This would not prohibit two-family construction on those lots, but it would allow for the ability, flexibility for single-family homes to also be constructed within the neighborhood. Planning Commission voted 6 to 0, and staff is also supportive of the request.
Any questions? Anybody good? All right. Do we have any public comment on this? Saying now to bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance amending a residential planned zoning district entitled RPZD 4-1154 Timber Trails containing approximately 26 acres to modify the zoning on lots 70 through 77, 98, and 99 to allow for use unit eight, single-family dwellings.
Maybe we go to the third and final reading? Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance amending a residential planned zoning district entitled RPZD 4-1154 Timber Trails containing approximately 26 acres to modify the zoning of lots 70 through 77, 98, and 99 to allow for use unit eight, single-family dwellings.
Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, number four. An ordinance amending Section 172.05 of Unified Development Code to remove minimum parking standards for non-residential uses. Kit?
Whereas removing minimum parking standards for non-residential uses will advance City Plan 2030 goals of reducing sprawl, prioritizing infill development, promoting traditional town form, and whereas minimum parking standards were primarily developed based upon parking surveys that measure peak demand, and whereas requiring a minimum number of parking spaces based upon a limited number of times a year when a parking lot will be completely full is a wasteful use of valuable land, and whereas landowners and developers are periodically denied the ability to adaptively reuse their property due to parking minimum requirements tied to specific land use categories, and whereas potential economic development opportunity and streamlining of our city code is a benefit to the city's development climate. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 172.05 standards for the number of spaces by use of the Unified Development Code by repealing and replacing it with Exhibit A.
Okay. Chairman?
Minimum parking requirements are common throughout many cities. Particularly larger cities may have enormous impact on many aspects of our built environment as we've discussed through City Plan 2025 and City Plan 2030. However, there's a very limited research justifying the numbers behind oftentimes parking ratios. Minimum parking ratios are typically based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' recommendations, which are in turn based on surveys performed to measure peak demand of a certain use. Peak demand is generally the one to five days a year, like Black Friday or Christmas holidays, where parking lots are at their fullest. More than half of the 101 published parking rates within the nation are based on four or fewer surveys of parking occupancy, and 22% of those are actually based on a single survey. How that applies in Fayetteville several times each year, we, planning staff has to deny a business license or discourage a prospective business owner from moving into an existing building because that location cannot meet the minimum parking requirements laid out in Chapter 172. How our parking requirements work are that it's based on a specific use of a property, the size of that use, so the number of square feet within a building, for instance, and that we basically have a criteria that you have to meet that minimum parking requirement. As an example, a restaurant has to have one parking space for every 100 square feet of restaurant space. A professional office has to have one space for 300 square feet. A medical office, a little bit different, is one space for 250 square feet. So we have a number of those differences within our current ratios. Because of those minimum parking ratios, we oftentimes have difficulty with older office or retail centers that can't easily adapt to changing real estate market conditions, and prospective tenants are limited to their originally anticipated uses. There's a relatively new one, for instance, at Nelson Crossing, that there are empty tenant spaces because the parking, the parking spots there aren't enough to allow for future tenants because they already exceed the amount that they're allowed. We also meet with different developers about the same properties over and over again, particularly downtown and along our older developed corridors such as MLK and College Avenue, where new potential infill development proposals are either impossible or too costly to develop because of our minimum parking requirements. It is our intent with this particular proposal to remove those minimum parking ratios for non-residential uses. The first intent of this code amendment is to encourage appropriate infill development and revitalization, which is the first goal of City Plan 2030. We believe this will allow business owners and developers to determine the minimum parking needs for their intended uses. We feel like there also there's a more accurate assessment of those needs for non-residential uses from the business owner, developer, as a proposal to staff. Maximum parking ratios and residential parking ratios are not affected by this proposed code amendment. It's not something we reviewed in our research. There are numerous cities that we included as part of your packet that have either partially or totally removed minimum parking ratios for non-residential uses with positive results. Our research and observation in Fayetteville that has been that if a non-residential use does not have enough parking, a couple of things will happen. One, the use will go out of business. It will move to a new location that meets the customer's needs to succeed, or customers will simply find a different mode of transportation to that site or to that business. We very rarely have ever received complaints about a lack of non-residential parking or adverse impacts to surrounding property because of lack of non-residential parking, even in the downtown business community. We do receive a number of comments, or complaints, weekly about residential parking. We are a university town, so this is a very, it's a nuance that we have that some other cities don't have. So that's something we're not, simply not ready to look at in great depth at this point in time. We believe this code change is an economic development tool that will allow turnover and revitalization of our existing building stock for a variety of new and startup businesses. We believe underused parcels represent a costly missed opportunity in many cases, and we hope to be able to incentivize and encourage redevelopment in a lot of those areas such as College Avenue, where we're providing new sidewalks, streetlights, making it a much safer pedestrian environment, and this is one additional way in order to encourage redevelopment in those areas. It also simplifies our development procedures. It opens up infill development to be more functionally viable. It hopefully activates underperforming vacant or derelict lots, enables more opportunities for sustainable or green development principles. We believe all those are potential positive outcomes of this proposal. We also wanted to note, we did this at the Planning Commission as well, that eliminating the non-residential park, minimum parking requirement does not mean that all developments start providing no parking. We don't believe that's a viable model in many places within our city. Rather, it allows and encourages folks to share their parking, particularly with off-peak demand uses, where you have residential and commercial in close proximity, much like is what happens in our downtown on a daily basis. We do believe it provides more flexibility to provide the parking that's truly needed for a development to succeed, rather than a peak hour requirement. The Planning Commission agreed with that assessment and recommended to you all in favor of this ordinance. We do request that, while welcome questions, we do, would like to hold it on the first or second reading tonight to allow the community to certainly give input. We've had letters for and against this proposal submitted to you all as council members, and so we want to take our time. It is a big change in our codes, and so we certainly want to take our time and be diligent about that process.
Okay. What questions we have for Jeremy on this? Anything? Yes, Del.
Jeremy, is there ever a case where a developer, I'm thinking of a medical office, and he wanted more parking places? He said the city would not, so explain that to us.
We have a maximum parking ratio in our ordinance. There is an ability to ask the Planning Commission for more parking, and so that's certainly built into the code currently.
Well, there is a maximum, but had he wanted to, he could have come and asked for more?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Yes.
So what, the change we're proposing here is to do away with the minimums, but we're not eliminating the maximums?
That's correct. We've not, we've not found a community that went to that extent to eliminate maximums, at least in our research, but we were very targeted and focused research, obviously. We were looking at communities who specifically did away with their minimum standards, which is generally what is the concern. Maximum standards generally deal with more environmental issues, providing it's usually more wasteful of space because as user groups turn over a building, for instance, over time, they may or may not need that amount of parking. So you see many properties within the city that now have much more parking than would ever be needed for the businesses that occupy that space. And so it's certainly something we have an ability, a mechanism to request that, and we see that from time to time.
Okay. Well, I applaud our efforts to deregulate our businesses to this extent. Of course, I'd like to see the maximum removed as well. I think a business is perfectly capable of projecting its needs, and they have the strongest economic incentives to do so accurately. No one's crystal ball works perfectly. I'll be the first to admit that. But our crystal balls don't work perfectly either as city staff and we, those of us who are setting policy. This is a perfect example where the marketplace will allocate the parking spaces needed. If a business were to open a retail shop with no parking places, they would go out of business very quickly. And the owner, or the proprietor, or the corporation operating that business would stand to lose the most. So they have the strongest economic incentive to make sure they guess accurately and correctly. I like that a lot.
Okay. Anything? Yes, Al.
Jeremy, would, would an example of the maximum be something like we see on college? There are a couple of shopping centers that have just expansive parking lots. We wouldn't allow something like that to happen now. Fiesta Square, for example, an expansive parking lot that is never full.
Right.
Basically, just a large area of blacktop that's unused and not creating tax dollars.
Correct. And that's a, that's a perfect example of a property that is almost 100% paved, probably hundreds of parking spots more than is ever used even on the busiest day of the year. And we believe a great redevelopment opportunity, and we've spoken to property owners in situations such as Fiesta Square and other places where they now believe that there's a better investment than these expansive parking lots. They can put more retail square footage and use the exact same amount of parking that's already there. So that's a, that's a good example. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Did we have it right here for two weeks, or you wanted?
I'd say we leave it here.
Okay.
Here, I'd want to make sure that the City Council has at least taken a look at my memo. Because of the Personal Property Protection Act that was enacted, this is kind of like a one-way street. If you remove the minimum requirements as recommended by the planning department, and you run into problems where if commercial land is developed in our mixed-use areas in like Walker Park, where a lot of the mixed-use areas are in low residential areas, a developer could decide, I'm just going to put my, my business in here, my office in here, my restaurant in here, and provide no parking, and I'll just use the parking that the neighborhood has been using. Now, that makes a good financial sense to that business owner because he doesn't have to pay for parking. Now, if that's a problem for his neighbors, well, that's just kind of tough on them because most of his customers aren't going to be the neighbors, it's going to be other people coming in. So his employees and his customers could park in the neighborhood and cause, you know, a little bit of unhappiness in the neighborhood. My proposal that I'm recommending to you would grant to the planning staff a variance procedure that they do themselves, doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission. They could vary the amount all the way from 100% of the minimum that it is right now or all the way down to 0%. They could also do things. They could say, well, we'll allow your reduction in your parking, but give us some bike rags, or give us some scooter parking, or give us some disabled parking. But what it does, it would give the planning staff complete discretion all the way down to zero, and you could kind of have a test run for a few years and see if, when no parking is allowed in these particular areas, is that okay? Is that absorbed by the neighborhood, no problems, or does it cause problems? If it caused problems, then you could always do away with the variance procedure or make it more difficult if you did encounter problems in the future. But if you simply do away with the minimum standards, because of the Personal Property Protection Act, you will never again be able to require minimum standards. So it is a closed door, a locked door, because if you do, then you're putting on a new regulation, and the regulation is going to impact more than 20% of the landowner's value, and therefore that would be a taking under that law. And so we would be ending up in paying the developer to build a parking lot for his customers, which I don't think anybody would like to see. So I think we need to be very careful. These minimum parking standards have been in place in Fayetteville for decades. There have been many boards of directors and city councils that approve them, and so I think before they're just totally thrown away, we ought to try to look maybe at a transition to see if the planning staff can look at the parking situation, say, sure, in that area, there's plenty of parking, that's not going to be an adverse effect on the neighborhood, so you don't have to do any parking, or somewhere in between. But I don't recommend just an immediate discarding of all the minimum parking standards because I just don't think anybody's crystal ball is that good. As Alderman Latour said, I don't have a crystal ball to see if that's going to work. I would rather have some real-world experience and see if it works.
Okay. Sarah?
I'd like to respond to that. Typically, how that is handled in other cities where, especially in historic areas where the commercial districts don't have parking by today's standards, is then you would form a residential parking district with generally two-hour parking during the day and then residential by permit at night. So I think that that's an easy thing to overcome, as lots of other cities around the country have done that. And as far as handicapped accessible spaces, now Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not under our code. That's actually an Americans with Disabilities Act mandated, so this will not affect ADA spaces. A business will still be required to have a certain number of handicapped accessible spaces. And then also, you know, these parking standards have been in effect for many decades, and if you look at the development that's occurred within these last few decades, it's exactly the kind of development that is, a lot of it's contrary to our 2030 City Plan goals, where we have large expanses of parking lots separating businesses from the street, and it's really created some unhealthy urban conditions that I think that eliminating this could do a lot to help. But then there's also the economic impact of this, and as we try to encourage infill development in our downtown area, if you think about the cost of building a structured[1648.28] this could do a lot to help. But then there's also the economic impact of this, and as we try to encourage infill development in our downtown area, if you think about the cost of building a structured parking deck in a parking garage, it runs between $20,000 to $40,000 of space. And when you're talking about affordable retail space, affordable housing space, you know, affordable business space, that is a huge barrier to creating that type of affordability that we need to see our city thrive. So I think that it's in the best economic interest, it's in the best urban planning interest, to go ahead and remove these parking minimums. And I think that we have some good mechanisms that we can fall back on should we inadvertently create friction in some of our areas downtown.
Yes, Adele.
So I have a question about the residential parking district. I know we have some of those in the City of Fayetteville, but we also have people that monitor those, and expanding those districts costs money in staff and equipment, cars to do that with. That would give me some concern to say that we could do that all over the City of Fayetteville outside the entertainment or downtown district. Does that?
Well, I think, you know, in terms of like Walker Park area, that's where we've got a commercial district in close proximity to a residential district. You know, I think that if that became an issue, that's a tool we could use, and if they're monitoring it and they're finding violators, then, you know, that's, we're collecting revenue from those violations. So I think that it has the potential to pay for itself in that. But, you know, I just look at what it's costing us in terms of land values, in terms of water quality, because every one of these parking spaces, that's impervious surface area that we're dealing with runoff, that, you know, right now, we don't have a stormwater utility, so we're paying to treat all that water. So I think that also, when you talk about being able to increase the density of properties for sale or rent, you look at increased tax base. So I think that it economically, while that might be a bump to create some, or, yeah, a bump to create the residential parking districts if we had to do that, I think that in the long term, we would come out ahead financially.
Mayor.
Okay. Okay. We were going to leave it on the first reading, but go ahead, Adele.
I have another question. So do you think that we could study the effects of having those residential parking districts before going forward with this and maybe looking at Kit's idea as a more cautious approach to achieving the same goal? Because as Kit said, this is a closed door if we do it. But we could accomplish the same thing through staff being able to review these requests and give businesses the same amount of parking requirements that the staff-presented ordinance would do. But, you know, there's a lot of startup cost in creating new, expanding the residential parking districts, a lot, talking millions probably, if the districts were to be expanded all across the City of Fayetteville, cars, fleet expenses. I'm just...
Yes, I don't really think that we're going to run into that many residential parking districts, and especially not in any time in the near future. I would also question the millions of dollars to expand that. But what concerns me about putting it in the hands of a staff member is it gives the appearance of impropriety or impartiality rather than having set standards that you can guide by because, you know, what happens when developer A comes and talks to the planning department and they get a reduction that they like, but then developer B doesn't? I feel like that puts too much power in the hand of that one individual, and instead we should have a straight standard across the board.
Mayor?
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Let the record show, I agree with Alderman Marsh.
I'll be sure they get this in a minute.
Please.
Yes, Mark.
Whenever I first heard this, I would, I'll say immediately, because parking is such a big issue in a lot of Ward Two, I was wary, and I have taken the time, like I try to do with issues, especially those that are emotional as well as impacting economic development, and there is a lot of data, a lot of data regarding parking districts, and they are in very specific commercial, in very specific areas where there's commercial or institutional and residential overlap. That's really the only area that would be considered for a parking district. So that's something that we do need to probably discuss, especially since we're a college town and we know that there is this overlap, so. There's a lot of that out there because initially I thought, man, this is crazy. I'm not, I'm not good with this, but I like it a lot now that I've looked at what other cities have done. I really, especially in Ward Two where we have College Avenue, we've got to do something to encourage the development in some properties that simply do not have the room to meet the current standards.
Mayor?
Yeah, Adele, go ahead.
I'll just say, my last, I'm glad we're holding it. I just want to throw some ideas out there for people to think about, but...
Right.
With Ward Four being the largest ward with neighborhoods, we have more contiguous neighborhoods to the university than any other area of the City of Fayetteville. We deal with a lot of parking in our neighborhoods, so that's one of the things that I hear as one of the largest number of complaints I get. So just think about that as we're going through this process, and to put it out there again, I don't think holding off for six months as a trial even would be a bad thing in going with Kit's idea, but I'll consider all the points that you made. You made some good points, too.
I will not be here next City Council meeting because I'll be attending the destination downtown.
Well, I will tell you, this is a major shift, and I don't, unless the council just suddenly wants to...
Mayor, the staff would like for you to do this on three individual meetings.
I'd like to get a little more familiar with it.
No worries on this one.
All right, great, thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay. All right, what announcements do we have?
Several announcements, Mayor. First, this Thursday, September the 3rd, is the Fayetteville Community Resource Division invites all of our citizens and visitors coming to town for the Fifth Annual Festival. It's in coordination with First Thursday this week, and it's between 5:30 and 7:30 p.m. this Thursday. Also, want to remind our City of Fayetteville businesses that renewing business licenses have begun, and you have until October the 31st to do so. Information can be found on the city's website as well as local media sites that you might interact with. The, want to remind the council that tomorrow is the, and invite the public to the groundbreaking ceremony for Rupel Road. It will be at 11:00 a.m. at the southernmost end of the existing North Rupel Road near Owl Creek School, and the address for that is 375 North Rupel. We hope you'll come out. This is the largest single-bond project that was approved by the citizens that we are getting on the way, and I hope you'll enjoy us in that celebration of starting that project. We also want to invite all of our, or welcome all of our fans and visitors to our first home football game this Saturday. Hopefully, we'll have a victory and a lot of happy visitors. And then lastly, the city offices are closed on Monday, September the 7th, in observance of Labor Day.
Right now, we have a special election happening coming up on Tuesday, but early voting is underway. You can vote at the Washington County Courthouse from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., any day through Friday, or voters can cast their vote at any polling location next Tuesday from 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and the election is for our Uniform Civil Rights Protection Ordinance.
Mayor, I've got two kind of legal announcements. One is maybe more happy than the other. About five months ago, I told you that one of the decisions where we had won when we had been sued by a property owner who claimed we were responsible for some flooding problems, we had won that case and summary judgment prevailed on both of their counts against the city, but they filed a notice of appeal. They have not followed through, they've not ordered the record, and so evidently, our victory is going to remain and not be overturned on appeal. Secondly, you, I think I had told the City Council I was going on vacation this Friday and be gone for a few weeks, depending on how long my wife will be away from her bloodhound, either two or three weeks, depending if she gets too homesick. I'm going to leave a little bit later. Friday at 9 o'clock, there will be a hearing on a temporary restraining order, that is a motion for a temporary restraining order that was filed late yesterday afternoon. I did not even receive the petition until like 5:30 yesterday afternoon. I will be defending the City Council's position on this. I believe that the election will continue. I will certainly do everything I can to make sure people have the right to vote. It's their constitutional right to vote according to Amendment Seven, and so I do not think that the election will be ended despite the efforts of the plaintiffs to have the judge enjoin the election. There will probably be more litigation after the election, and I'll keep you informed on that.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes?
The Washington County Fair is going on right now. Invite everyone to go out and have a fun time.
All right.